Good evening. On behalf of Mr. Poole, our chairman, I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. We'll be filling in for him this evening. He and Mr. McIntyre were both unable to attend tonight's meeting. Appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate her show being here. Are there any other members of the media here? All right, Charles, we're depending on you to get it right tonight, okay? All right. This time, I'm going to ask Ms. Vicky Watson if she will have her invocation and pledge. You'll stand for the pledge. Pledge. Next on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of the July 1st and July 21st special called meetings. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as presented. Next, our committee reports. Instructional program, Ms. Crump.
No report.
Facilities, Mr. Graves.
No report.
There was actually a report that we went over in one of our special called meetings. So that's what you're seeing here.
Just presented for information.
Right, it's just presented for information.
Thank you. All right, finance. The finance committee met on June 30th to discuss a couple of issues. Specifically, those were budget amendments through June the 30th, 2020, in order to bring our budget up to where it needed to be and balanced. And the committee and board did approve those. We also presented a detailed financial statement by Mr. Dudley through June 30th as well, which was approved. And then we also discussed the county commissioner's budget for the 2021 school year in comparison to last year's budget as well. And we discussed current contract status and board policy concerning bidding of contract services such as driver's aid, workers' compensation, audit contracts, and insurance. I made a motion as chair that we continue all current contracts that we have in place for one year. And at the end of that year, they will be put out for bid with the understanding that they will be bidded out going forward on a three- to five-year rotation. And that was approved by the board as well. And that was all that we had. Personnel, Ms. Watson.
No report.
Allison, Ms. Crump.
No report. However, Ms. Calvert has brought to my attention that there is a policy that we need to put into place by mid-month, and that will be before our next meeting. So we need to have a policy meeting, and we could go ahead and schedule that now if you'd like. If it's possible to put it on the calendar for next Tuesday afternoon. Ms. Miller, will that work next Tuesday afternoon at 6:00 p.m.?
Will it work?
Okay. All right, thank you.
And legislative resource. Ms. Calvert or Ms. Gibson, either or both.
I do not have anything.
Don't either.
Okay, all right. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Beverly Pennington if she will come up for a health and safety update.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back this evening to give you an update. We did give updates on July 21st, so I wanted to just kind of bring you up to speed with the things that we've been working on since that time. We did host discussions, as we told you, on the 21st with the Health Department that was scheduled for the 23rd. And our participants in those discussions were our school nurses, every one of them were able to attend, and some district administration, and district leaders from the Health Department. We had great conversations that went on for quite a while, about an hour and a half in length. They started out with sharing the current COVID data in Stanley County. We reviewed with them our reopening plans and went into some specifics with our student screenings, our employee screenings, and visitor screenings. We talked about the communication that's going to be needed as we start this journey together, and we have developed a good plan that I think is going to serve us all very well. We did have some specific questions that we gave to them a couple of days in advance, and so we worked through those questions and feel real good about the information that we have and the plan that we have in place. So from the very beginning, they have been a big support to us, and I have no doubt they will continue to be. So I commend our officials at our local Health Department. The next week, Ms. Calvert and I actually participated in an online webinar with all of the superintendents in the state and all of the health directors in the state. And while a lot of it was review, it was good to have all of it validated that we are going in the right direction. There was a little bit of new information there, and today, actually, we just received the Q and A's that came out of that phone call. So we continue to just read over that and make sure that it's in line with the guidance that we have put out to our principals. And that leads me to last Thursday. We had our principals' meeting, and so we went over all the protocols with our school-based administrators and also our administrators in all our sites. Our students and teachers out in the schools are important, but so are the folks who work more behind the scenes in transportation facilities and central office. So we're making sure that everyone is aware of all of the protocols. So basically, what we stressed is that it's not just one of the mitigating factors that will help keep us safe as we enter this new phase, but it's all three working together, the three W's. And we talked about how it's best when they all work in unison, when we're spaced apart, when we're waiting, when we're wearing our face coverings, and when we're washing and we're sanitizing and we're keeping our areas and our hands clean. We looked at the face covering expectations and made sure that everyone understood that our expectation is that everyone is wearing face coverings throughout the school day. There will be built-in breaks. You know, it's a long time to be covered up. And so we modeled that in our principals' meeting, and every hour, we had some mask breaks where everybody stayed in their seats and had a time to take off the mask for a minute or two, and then we went right back to it. We also reviewed all the expectations for social distancing and how this applies not only to the classroom but in all the areas that people could potentially congregate, such as teachers. This is going to be coming back from summer that's unlike any other summer. And, you know, teachers are creatures of habit, and they love to get together and catch up. But we have to remind ourselves that it's going to take every one of us working together to distance, to wear masks, and to make sure that we're washing our hands and sanitizing the areas that we work in. Specifically, we went into the student protocols, the daily checks for students. And this is going to include a team of a thermometer, a temperature taker, a person that's going to ask the screening questions, another person who will support that team in being the escort if there is someone who is positive from that screening, and taking them to the office, to the area that we've designated is where we're going to put our students while we do a second screening. So we went through all that. So they're thinking about who's going to fill those roles each morning. We talked about how this is going to occur on the bus. I know the last time that we talked, a lot of questions about buses. I have not turned around to look, but yes, Mr. Lambert is here. So I will just briefly give you an overview of that, but he's here if you want to go into more depth. There was a lot of discussion about do we take temperatures on the bus as they board? And it was decided it is too risky to student, to the bus driver, to the motorists that are around us, to the safety aspect for us to do that. So we have rolled out effective yesterday, I believe it went live yesterday, if not today, an attestation form that all parents of all bus riders are going to have to complete prior to boarding a bus. And this takes that burden of screening and temperature taking off of the bus driver or anyone on the bus and puts it on the parent. So they are testing that I will screen my child before I put them on the bus. Now, that student also goes through screening once they get to school. But for that bus ride, the parent is saying, I will not let them ride if they have symptoms or if they have a fever, and they will take that temperature. So schools have done a lot of thinking about how this is going to work. And I believe most of the schools are going to have their teams go to the bus and meet the bus and the car riders at that point before that parent drives off, you know, before we get, you know, a whole bus unloaded, and then you have people, you know, bunched up. So they'll do it methodically, one at a time. And we do think that, you know, the first couple of days is going to be a slow process. But hopefully, just like the beginning of any school year, we'll get those processes more under control and do it in the timeframe that's been allotted. We also talked about symptomatic students throughout the day and how to take care of that. So we feel like principals left with a good understanding of how to conduct that symptom monitoring each day with students. At the time when we met Thursday, did not have the final plan for the employees that needed to be vetted by Dean Chatley, and we did hear back from him. And our process with the employees is that all employees are going to have to answer those same screening questions and take the temperature to see if they have a fever. And the best way for us to do that and have a record of it is through the tax system. Currently, right now, just our classified employees clock in and clock out on the tax system. We're going to move to where all employees, myself included, will start my day with logging into tax. There's a little message that will pop up asking me to think about these questions and asking me if I've taken my temperature. And then by clocking in, I'm attesting that I have done that, I passed the screening, and I'm good for the day. Certified personnel are not accustomed to that, so that's going to be something to get used to, but they're only going to have to do it on the front end of the day. They do not have to clock out at the end of the day since they are a certified personnel. And then for, and all of the schools will have a station in the office area where the thermometers are kept, so they have access to those thermometers. And then finally, for our visitors, we decided the easiest process is to use the lobby guard system. Visitors, of course, are going to be very limited, but you'll still have some people coming in to the office area, and everyone coming in, whether it be, you know, the soft drink delivery person who needs to go down on the seventh grade hall and fill the machine or whatever, they have to be scanned. Mandy Melton has done a good job with checking with her vendors because her vendors arrive before sometimes the cafeteria manager comes in. So they all have a screening process that they have said that their employees will go through each day. So we feel like we've touched all bases with the screening and monitoring of symptoms with students, staff, and with our visitors. And then finally, the nurses have really worked hard, and please, if you see one of them, reach out to them and tell them thank you. They're 10-month employees, and they have really put in some time this summer. And they have developed a tracking form that we will use that will be contained just within our Health Division, just our nurses. And that's where we're going to keep up with students and adults who have not passed the screening process and have been instructed to quarantine, to follow up with their health provider. It will have a checklist, have we reported to the Health Department? Because that is something by law that every principal has to do with a communicable disease. So they will be the point of contact. We can't have 21 schools reaching out to the Health Department, different people. So the nurses are known to the Health Department, so with me, the nurses, those will be our main point of contact in making sure that the principal has met their obligation by reporting suspected, confirmed, presumptive cases of COVID to the Health Department. So I have Mike here. I have Mr. Bowers, maybe? Okay, if you've got any questions regarding safety, wellness.
Questions? Yeah. Okay. First question is, I know that childcare providers within the state had requested an exemption or an alternative to face masks. And it's my understanding that the state did grant an alternative, and that was face shields that would come below the chin and around the sides. And the reason why this request was made was, A, obviously, it's going to be easier to probably work with the face shields than it is going to be face masks with the kids, but more importantly, especially with the younger kids, and I'm thinking about the elementary school kids, seeing the facial expression, particularly teachers that are mouthing words, plays a big part in students learning language and vocabulary and things like that. So do you have an update for us on what are face shields also a valid alternative to face masks for kids?
Well, that guidance did come out in, I think, the July 24th update with DHHS documentation. And we have looked at it as the nurse team has looked at it. And our process for anyone who states that they have a medical exemption from wearing the face covering is that we will look at what documentation we have on file. We will work with that family to talk with their healthcare provider to verify that there is a medical need for some alternative. The face shield can be used as an alternative to the face covering as long as it goes through that process through the school nurse. So if any parent does have a concern about their child wearing a face covering all day, I encourage them to reach out to their school nurse, and that process can begin. It is our hope that in every classroom, there'll be covering of some type for every child.
So is this, okay, so according to my information, there is not some type of medical requirement or exemption for children in daycare. So is the state requiring that exemption for school students?
The wording of using the face shield does come with, you know...
That requirement?
Yes, with the requirement that if you are working with a student who cannot wear the face covering, it is an approved alternative. It's better than nothing. It's not better than a face covering, but it's better than nothing at all.
Okay, I think we're going to need to, and I'll actually, I'll save that for my comments at the end. We need to come back to that. I do have another question. The second question is, let's see here, thermometers. So I'm thinking about the families, is there a supply, is the state providing thermometers to families? For example, if a child comes to school and, for whatever reason, maybe even a parent sends a note in, but there's some question about availability of thermometers, is there a supply that each school has that they can send a thermometer home with a student if it's necessary?
We do not have a supply for parents through what we have been given through the state PPE and through what Mr. Bowers has purchased. However, you may recall me mentioning last year that we had Stanfield Elementary participate in the Kensa program. And this is a program where any parent who wished to sign up to participate would receive a smart thermometer to keep at home, as well as the school received one or two. And so the purpose of that is to track flu symptoms. This was before COVID. Excuse me, I have a chronic cough, and I'm going to need some water. Thank you. We extended the Kensa program to all elementaries this year. So that is something that I would love to see parents participate with.
Okay. Last question, and you take your time. My last question is, these attestation forms that we are requiring students bring, what happens when a child gets to the bus stop and doesn't have the completed form? What happens then?
The answer to that was actually in the Q and A that they sent out today. And it was exactly what we had discussed last week, that we're not going to leave a kid on the side of the road. We can pick up the child who does not have that attestation filled out yet. We can isolate them from other students and get them to school and then work on that process.
And then do the regular screening process?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question is, what protocols do we have in place if a staff member is exposed to COVID or test positive for COVID? And is the process different exposure to, maybe they went to something over the weekend, and they know that someone there has COVID, but they're not exhibiting any symptoms? So what would the protocol be for that person? And then also the protocol for someone that works in the school that does test positively? What does the quarantine look like? How long does it last? Who gets pulled into that quarantine, you know?
We have a complete guide that we have trained the principals on. The nurses are going to be the ones that help interpret that guide. And it has every possible scenario that you could think of. If...
Ms. Pennington, do you need a tech break and maybe come back up? Let's let someone else go and let you rest for a moment and get a little hydration.
I promise I have a chronic cough. I took a breathing treatment before I came to.
We understand.
That would be wonderful.
Why don't you come back up in just a bit? I'll call you up, and we'll go ahead and ask Dr. Blake Lewis if she'll come up and get a report, and then we'll get back to you in just a moment.
Hello, everyone. I do have a few updates for you from curriculum and instruction. The first item there is instructional staff expectations. This was a document I originally shared with you at our July 21st meeting. It was in your packet. We are in the process of finalizing that document to be shared with principals no later than Thursday morning, but I do want to stress that they have had access to the draft version of this document from its inception. So around the 4th or 5th of July, I think, is when we actually started on it. So they've been able to see this work in progress. We also had input from principals. So I want to thank Julianne Fallon, Chris Johnson, Anne McLendon, Jody Autry, Megan DePascal, and Joy Hathcock for their contributions to this document. I am also finishing up a document that I will share with principals in addition to this guide for instructional staff expectations that is a highlighted version of the main points for principals. So there will be a synopsis of that section of the expectations handbook along with forms that will be maintained by teachers and forms that will need to be completed and returned by parents. So just as a recap, this document covers family and student expectations, the actual staff expectations, attendance, meaning how we will track and monitor student attendance, even for those on remote learning weeks. There is also a section for grading and work submission, testing and exams, holding Google meets. There is an entire section devoted to IEP and 504 concerns for our exceptional children, and then general classroom setup, meaning that remote classroom setup. So again, this was a document that was in your packet on July 21st. I just wanted to update you that that was in its final review, and it'll be shared no later than Thursday morning so that principals can push that out to teachers, and those teachers will know exactly what those expectations are as we move into remote, well, total remote for some teachers, and then the hybrid Plan B for a large bulk of our teachers. Any questions before I move on to the next item?
You said that, sorry. I was just going to say, you said that that will be pushed out this Thursday via their email, so...
Yes, it will be sent to principals Thursday morning, and like I said, they have had access to it all along, but the final version is going out to them Thursday morning, and that is so they can share that with staff when they start returning on Friday. Other questions?
So the principals are not going to share that document with staff until they get into the school?
Well, they've had access to it since early July.
The teachers have, the staff has as well?
The principal has had access to it. So in communicating with staff, of course, they could reference it if they chose to, but the official version of it is going out to them Thursday morning.
To the principals?
Yes.
But to the staff? The reason I'm asking this question, so you don't think I'm trying to set you up?
Go ahead.
Is because I have had a number of conversations with staff that do not feel like they're getting all the information that is available. So I'm not saying that principals should share incomplete or inaccurate information or information that may change, but at the same time, you can share information and say, this may change because some information is often better than no information. And in the absence of any information, people will create their own information, and it creates a bunch of problems. So now, if staff, if they're going to be full-time remote, will they be coming into schools on Friday for that initial meeting where they would get access to this information?
Yes. The expectation is that even those teachers who have been designated or who will be designated, we're in the process of that as well this week, they will all come into the building with the only exception being granted to those who may have a medical condition that is documented that would prevent them from coming in. But the expectation is, yes, that all teachers, remote and face-to-face teachers, will come into the building.
Okay, the only reason I ask is that hopefully, the following Monday, there's no comments online or any phone calls that teachers don't have access to the information that's contained within that document.
Sure, and I will...
That would be a problem.
And I will stress that...
Or staff.
I will stress that these expectations are really nothing mind-boggling. They are just some basic expectations that exist even in a face-to-face classroom with a few minor tweaks to it to make them more applicable to a remote setting. So it's not going to be anything that is going to be a tremendous shock to them, nor should it be something that they perceive as impossible to implement because they've had some experience with remote learning already this spring. So this was just learning from those experiences and just basically putting it in a written format.
Okay, I'm just saying that there are situations where teachers feel at least that they're not getting information, so I'm just making you aware of that to set the expectation with principals...
Certainly.
...that all this, the staff should be informed.
Certainly. Certainly. Okay.
So I'm gonna concur here with Mr. Graves.
Okay.
Can you give, I, I feel like our teachers are feeling very anxious and, and trying to empathize with that anxiety.
Sure.
Can you give an example of what, what is on this expectation? Can you just give an example of something that teachers are gonna see?
Sure. Under staff expectation, which basically applies to the teachers, the first note I have here is that all teachers will share their Google Calendar with their principal. That's basically so their principal will know when they have Google meets set up with their remote students and the principal would be able to log in and participate in those if he or she chose to do so. Another item that I have here is that teachers will use Canvas as their virtual learning platform. And of course, we've already pushed that out to them for training. So when I say there's nothing that should be unexpected here, this was just simply capturing it in a written format. Would you like any other examples?
No, that, getting back to Canvas, have all of our teachers been trained with Canvas?
Ms. Calvert, do you have an update on that number?
I don't have an update on an exact number, but we put out training for teachers on Canvas at the 1st of July and asked them then to have that completed by August 1st. And if they didn't have it completed by August 1st, they would need to do that when they return to, to school. But our idea was putting it out early so they could go ahead and have that completed, you know, before they return to school if they had an opportunity to do that at home. I also say, most of our middle and high school teachers were using Canvas anyway. So I know for sure for our high school teachers, that shouldn't be anything new for them.
Have either of you had, excuse me, have either of you had any feedback on elementary teachers and their working through the process of, of learning the program? And are they having difficulty with it? Anyone reaching out to you all for additional help?
I have not received any feedback, but as far as elementary, I would defer to Mr. Lynn Plummer. Mr. Plummer, do you have any update on that? So we have not heard anything from elementary teachers saying that there was difficulty then. Would that be correct?
Question I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, please.
A question that I have is, I just want for, to understand the process better. Elementary school teachers, they're gonna be in the classroom most of the time. Most of them face-to-face with all of these children. Now, we are gonna have some elementary school children that have opted for, or their parents opted for them to learn remotely. So is it going to be the teacher that is in charge of teaching in that classroom face-to-face who is also in charge of the Canvas learning? Or will it be a separate virtual teacher that will be teaching kindergarten curriculum, first grade curriculum?
At the elementary level, we, there was a group that met Sunday afternoon and then a group that met again yesterday for basically the large part of the day to do the teacher allotments and to meet with those elementary and middle school principals and help them work through the logistics of that. So currently at the elementary level, there are teachers designated as remote learning teachers who will handle the course load of the remote learning students, while there are teachers who are designated face-to-face and that will be their sole responsibility there.
Okay, so elementary school level, we have two sets of teachers. We have virtual teachers, we have face-to-face teachers. So those teachers who are teaching face-to-face do not need to worry about what the kids that are doing at home are doing because we have another teacher that's responsible for them.
That would be correct at the elementary level, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so can you explain how that's gonna look in middle school and in high school?
Certainly. I will flip to high school first because at the high school level, with the diversity of courses being what they are and with the high school being on an A, B, C rotation, so teachers would only have one-third of their normal population in front of them at a time. We did not designate currently any high school teachers to be solely remote teachers. Those numbers will just be rolled into the regular classroom. But since those teachers are going to be using Canvas as their mode of delivery anyway, because students would be in front of them for one week and then at home for two weeks, those students who are choosing remote will simply access every week through the Canvas course. So the teacher will be posting every week all of his or her work in Canvas. So there was really not a need to designate any teachers at the high school level to be solely remote teachers. Now, if we come across a teacher who completes the application process to be a remote teacher, who has a documented medical condition, of course, we would work with that to make that accommodation.
Okay, so basically, we have a teacher in high school and every single lesson is going to be posted in the Canvas format.
That is the expectation, yes.
On an A week, those kids, Monday through Friday, are gonna go in there and they're gonna have access to that Canvas lesson, which they can watch or if the teacher chooses to just do it again live for them or however they're gonna do that. But then they also have the teacher for that hour or however long right in front of them to help answer questions and guide them.
That is correct. So during that week that they are face-to-face, the teacher can actually deliver the content in person. The teacher can set up various learning experiences for those students. She can do small group instruction with them. She can do one-on-one instruction with them, whatever it might need to be to meet the needs of those students who are in front of her that week. And of course, everything that is done that A week, the students who are B and C week designated would have access to it in Canvas. And then the teacher has those hours at the end of the day from 1:30 to 3:30 to connect with those students on remote learning weeks so that she can check in with those students. Now, at the middle school level, our schools are doing kind of a hybrid blend of the designated remote or designated fully face-to-face. And that's simply because of some certification area concerns with middle school teachers and the way that middle school is structured. So some of our middle schools have been able to work at where they have designated a certain number of teachers to be full remote. But I know, for example, at South Stanley Middle School, because of their numbers being so small and teacher certification areas, they have actually worked a schedule where, let's say that it's a sixth grade teacher who has three blocks of face-to-face and then they have one block that is remote to teach their content area in which they're certified. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
Paul, Mr. McIntyre, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So will you explain a little bit more about the middle school? I think that's where I have some concerns. If a teacher's teaching face-to-face, that group, but at home, the, the group that is at home remotely, are they seeing that teacher teach?
That, that depends. That is an option. If the teacher chooses to or if that student wanted to join the class, of course, we have Google Meet capacity through laptops in the classroom. Teachers who have smart boards may also be able to do that. I know bandwidth is a concern to be able to do that across the county. I have asked our IT department questions about that and bandwidth is what comes up as the concern with that. But I do want to stress that every middle school student would have access to that teacher if it's not a fully designated remote teacher and they're having to do that hybrid model I was speaking of. They would still have access to that teacher between 1:30 and 3:30 every day.
Okay, so a concern of mine is, are, are we requiring an insurmountable amount of work from our teachers with this hybrid, this hybrid plan? Because if a teacher is middle school, okay, so face-to-face, then that teacher also has to have time for remote, to plan remote, correct?
They would, but that is what that 1:30 to 3:30 block of time is designed to do.
But then also they have, they have a time in there where they're having to... Is it that block of time where they're meeting with, with other students that they're gonna meet with other students?
It's a two-hour block of time. And so the intent there is that it can be flexed to meet with students, to do planning. That, that is the intent.
This is hard. I mean, it really is. And I feel like that our teachers are definitely going to be doing double-duty, triple-duty work from what they have in the past. Now, I know teachers will do whatever is asked of them because that's what teachers do. But I'm just, I just have that concern. So I, I'm just hoping that maybe as teachers get together or principals or whatever, that, that there's a way to relieve some of this excessive, it seems like, planning or, or time even for them to plan.
I, I do share your concerns. I am a former middle school teacher myself. I taught middle school language arts and social studies. So I know the amount of time that goes into planning and structuring those lessons. I will remind you that the middle school will be at half-capacity. They will only have half of their normal student population in front of that teacher at a given time. So that will allow for a little more flexibility with that teacher in terms of how she, how her time is used up during the course of that block of instruction. But yes, it is going to be a different type of year. And I don't know any other way around it.
Also remember about the, the extra teachers like the art, music, PE, SC, TE.
So yes, I'm glad you reminded me of that, Ms. Calvert. In addition to just those normal teachers being in the building, since we are transitioning our exploratory classes at the middle school level to be fully remote, meaning they will post everything in Canvas, those teachers would be onsite to provide some relief to those teachers in terms of small breaks to do, you know, restroom or just some personal downtime. Those arts and music and PE teachers could come in and, you know, maybe monitor the classroom in independent learning activity for 20, 30 minutes to give that teacher some time to go and process some information, make some phone calls, whatever he or she might need to do. We are also looking at those remote teachers reporting into the building every day as well. So they would be onsite to provide some rotation coverage as well. So there, there is some allowance there.
I just want to make sure that our teachers know that we are going to support them because attendance has to be taken, correct?
It does.
Every day. I mean, students are going to have to be held accountable. So it's not just our teachers that are being held accountable. We, I want them to know that we know our students have got to step up their game.
That's correct.
And be held accountable.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna follow up on this. One of the things I wanna make sure I get clarification on personally is this. If I hear something and it's not accurate, then I always start out by saying that I don't agree with the premise. So, and, and I understand there, there have been some claims that the amount of work that is gonna be placed on teachers at, at the middle school, potentially the high school level, is much higher. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try and characterize it. And, or overwhelming, okay? And Ms. Gibson mentioned doing double-duty or triple-duty. And I wanna know, in your professional opinion, is this, are, are we asking the teachers to do time and a half, double-duty, triple-duty, quadruple-duty? Because I don't want this to set, I want it to be corrected now. If, if, I mean, because we know everybody's having to do more work and especially the central office and everybody. But is it twice the amount? What is it? Can you guess to me? Because what I don't want is if it is triple-duty, then this is an issue where additional resources are gonna, there's gonna have to be a significant adjustment in the curriculum or there's gonna have to be, I mean, we can't expect a normal quote-unquote experience for the kids if, because the teachers just can't do it. They don't have the bandwidth. So from a bandwidth perspective, is this, is the scenario in middle school and/or high school requiring teachers to put in double-duty in your estimation or more?
I would want to ask what your, I guess, what your threshold is to define what a normal load would be.
Well, let's, let's, let's start by saying that most teachers are probably doing time and a half already without the COVID situation and without having to deal with remote students. But I know that you guys have given a two-hour block per day and as you just noted, there's, the capacity is split 50%. So there's a lot of flexibility there that allows to take up some of the, the slack for that extra work, right? It's, it's accommodating people's time to be able to deal with this unusual situation. So given that two-hour block every day and the fact that the classes are half-full every week, is how much more effort is being placed on top of the teacher beyond, beyond their normal time and a half effort with this remote situation?
I would say it's comparable. I would say that because instead of a 75-minute block of instruction, it's an hour block of instruction. So there's less preparation time there. Of course, you mentioned the half-capacity and also that two-hour block of time every day. So I would say with those things in place, it is a comparable expectation.
The reason I ask this question is either one of two things is true. One, which I think is the case, that the central office has been incredibly thoughtful in planning this out or B, you haven't been. And I think you guys have been. And so I appreciate you confirming that for me.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay, there are a few more documents that I have for you.
May I ask one more question, please?
Yes.
Actually, I have two questions circling back around to the issue of bandwidth. I know several people have approached me about, will the teacher actually be live streaming the lesson so that every student logs on at the same time as though they were in class from a remote standpoint and get the lesson given to them at the same time the face-to-face instructions going on? We don't have the capability for that, is my understanding, either from the standpoint of bandwidth or available equipment
That is correct.
in each location.
That is correct.
All right, and circling around to the elementary aspect of this. We know that we have an increase in the number of classrooms resulting from the, the safety aspect of social distancing at the elementary level, say, K4. That's also combined with the fact we're not increasing the number of classroom teachers at that level, correct? Okay, so what percentage of the time will instruction be given by the certified teachers versus the TAs, which has been discussed as well, or is that still part of the plan?
So there is not instruction given by TAs. The TAs are...
That's what I want clarified, correct.
Yes, so the TAs are utilized while the students are working independently. So for example, at the elementary level, teachers typically employ a workshop model where they provide a mini lesson and then the students disperse to independently practice that skill from the mini lesson. So the teacher assistant would actually be used to monitor those students during that independent time while the teacher pulled another group in to actually give the instruction.
The teacher's doing the instruction, the TA is more of a monitor.
Facilitator with those students.
Facilitator of what's going on.
That is correct, sir.
In the other groups, okay, all right. Ms. Watson?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Do we not have teacher assistants in our middle and high schools?
We have a limited number of them and most of them are assigned to exceptional children's departments.
If they had to, they could help.
I don't think so because I think it is how their pay is structured and that they are assigned to exceptional children, yes.
Well, and also in our self-contained classes, classrooms, we've made the decision to let those students come every day. We have to maintain that adult-student ratio.
Okay. All right. So the, the next doc- All right, so the uh the next document here is um the parent uh family cooperative remote learning agreement. This is just a document that we wanted to showcase with you that basically outlines. Uh, what uh the cooperation between parents and the school needs to be to make this successful. And again, these are just some basic things that we want to know um from the, from the parents. The first one there, my household currently has adequate access to the internet. Um, and then if not, I can provide an alternate location or I'll contact the teacher to request copies, print copies of the materials. So we want to make sure that we're communicating directly with the parents so that they know exactly. What they need to do if they have chosen remote learning for their student. Um, some things there about logging in or calling in for instruction. Um, that they will reach out when they need assistance and monitor their child's progress. So just some basic things that we're saying, parents, we need your assistance in this as well. If you're choosing remote, you are assuming some responsibility there for your child's learning. And I think that was some of the discussion earlier about some parent responsibility and accountability here. If they have chosen remote learning because they will be. Out of sight and and ear of the teacher for the majority of the time. And so we really want to make it clear to our parents exactly what we need from them so that their child can be successful with remote learning. Any questions there?
Have, have you put that out yet and have you gotten a number of people back that?
It, it is going to be part of their back to school packet. So that is also contained in the document that we've been discussing, the um staff expectations document. There's a hyperlink there and it's one of those documents that needs to go out to parents in their back to school packet that'll be returned. Just like we send out the free and reduced lunch forms and acceptable use policies and home language surveys, all of those documents.
Okay, um, one of my biggest concerns uh for parents who live in very, very remote rural areas. Um, you know, I know before we've gotten grants, you know, to allow people to have hotspots. It's not going to help you if you're somewhere where you can't get service. So if we have people who um, maybe they even did not want remote learning. Maybe they want face to face, but their kid is in high school and they only get face to face once a week, one, one time every three weeks. What is that student to do for those other two weeks when they're stuck at home? Um, could we consider? Possibly thinking outside of the box with partner, partnering with someone, I know the public library is a place where they can go. Um, could a small number of people, because I imagine this will not be too many of them, come into the school where they could be monitored? Um, into another classroom where they socially distanced and they could do their work? I'm just wondering if there's some things that we could consider um if the library is not an option.
I don't know, but I would be happy to investigate that and get back to you. But I, at this time, I I don't know.
And I guess we won't even know the demand for that until we get that back.
True, but I do know um from our IT department, the option for those students who do have spotty internet reception. Or maybe they don't have internet uh connectivity at their home. Uh, that using the Chromebooks, there is the capacity for them to download the documents. So if they were at school on that Friday and they know they're going into remote learning. They could go ahead and download all of the resources and materials that they would need and they would be able to access them offline. And when they return to school and connect to the wifi in the building, those documents would populate and upload. So um that, that of course is an option. And then, of course, if they, you know, there are several places around town that do offer free internet. I know McDonald's, Lowe's Home Improvement, um, and you mentioned the public library, all of those are places where they could access. Connectivity or maybe a a relative's house, a neighbor's house, something like that. So there are some options, but there is that, that option of them to download, complete the work offline. And as far as connecting with the teacher, of course, they wouldn't be able to access the Google Meet virtually. But Google Meet also generates a phone number to call in and they would be able to call in and participate through a phone line.
Okay, thank you.
So it would still be access?
Yes.
It may be just audio, not.
Correct.
Video, it would be audio. Have we considered reaching out to some of the um. Local community uh organizations, uh, the senior center, for example, in town, I know has wifi access. Maybe even some of the local churches and such uh around who may be willing to allow their. Illiterate building or something to be used for uh by students for that. I know um our church in Oakboro specifically does that for students and for adults even at times. Um, so, you know, I think there are other options available with something I think. We need to be proactive about looking into on their behalf to make sure that folks understand we've, we've given you an option here.
I, yes, sir.
Interject here. Um, so we've already have a partnership with the YMCA.
Correct.
And I know that they've been reaching out to churches for, to see if they could use their facilities. Um, also, we've sent our IT staff to the Y to check their bandwidth to see if that, that was an option for students. For on their remote days, for a full day. Um, also, I know with our SPART program, we're using, we're gonna, we're looking into using the EEYDL center.
We, we've explored some options, E and A.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Okay, the last thing that I have for you is just the final update from the intent to return form. We closed that survey on Friday at five and we had a total of seven thousand six hundred and fifty six responses. Our current enrollment number uh in the district is eight thousand two hundred and ten. So that translates into a ninety three percent response rate, which I think is phenomenal. Um, that our, our principals at the schools were able to. Uh, beat the bushes and contact parents and stress to them the importance of responding to, to this intent to return form. So we feel uh that our data from this is very accurate with a ninety three percent response rate. Uh, we ended up with the breakdown of parents requesting face to face instruction at seventy two percent. And those requesting full remote instruction was twenty eight percent. And I can break that down.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, uh, those, it's those parents who selected face to face instruction was seventy two percent. And those requesting full remote instruction was twenty eight percent. I do have some breakdowns um by school if, if you're interested. Baden did have one hundred percent responding. They were our only school with one hundred percent. Um, our lowest response rate came from East Albemarle Elementary, but even there we had a seventy seven percent response rate. Um, so again, I feel very confident in these numbers that have helped us in planning. Uh, developing our teacher allotments, looking at the number of teachers needed for face to face versus remote. And of course, all of that information has gone out to principals and they um have their teacher allotments. And and the CNI team has been working with them yesterday and today to make plans for assigning those teachers. And uh communicating that with those teachers so they know their assignments. Yes, sir.
When is that going to occur?
It already has. It has. It occurred yesterday. We went and met with um middle school principals. We went on site and met with them. Elementary principals, we brought them in by region here to the district office and went over their teacher allotments with them. And helped them designate remote versus face to face teachers. So that has all been done and those principals now have that information to share with their teachers.
So I'm curious, what is your expectation is when that information is going to be shared specifically with the teachers?
They were told they could go ahead and share it.
Is there an expectation that it's going to be completed by a uh?
Ms. Calvert, did you communicate an exact expectation on that or? I, I would imagine that the teachers have been communicating with their principal and the principal knows that their teachers want that information. I can't imagine that there's a principal who hasn't pushed that out. I know myself as a former principal, I, I would be pushing that out.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what, just.
I tried, do you have a question?
Good, um, so we uh, I heard that the breakdown of, you know, a hundred percent reporting from Baden and the lower number from East Albemarle. But do you have an actual breakdown of, um, say, by school, maybe who has the highest percentage? Or or who has the lowest percentage of actually who wanted face to face versus remote? Um, like, was, was there a drastic difference from school to school uh as far as what they wanting, what wanting?
I, I do have a breakdown of that. As far as the highest percentage requesting remote instruction. It is East Albemarle at forty one percent that requested remote instruction. Uh, the lowest request for remote instruction came from Oakboro at eighteen percent.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, fifth grade teachers who are going to be moving to the middle school.
Yes.
Have they all been notified which teachers these are going to be, who will be moving to the middle schools?
That decision was made yesterday when we met with those principals and brought them in. So the expectation there, the communication there was that that was the decision of that principal of who was assigned where. And in what capacity, whether it was remote or face to face. And so that information should have been communicated to those teachers.
Okay, um, going back to Canvas. Um, if teachers need additional help. Um, I can only imagine if I were still teaching and I had to do a whole new format like this. I would probably need more than just an online training. I probably need to go through it and create my own lessons and need somebody with me doing this. Will there be some workshops? Can they get some additional help?
Yes, so curriculum coaches are available to assist teachers with that. Media specialists are also trained in Canvas and can assist with that. And our IT department has uh technology facilitators who can also assist with that. So, yes, there are means out there for those teachers to get assistance with developing their Canvas courses.
Okay, um, also, I know that one thirty to three thirty um is designated for them to plan. It's also time in the schedule for PLCs, staff meetings and other such. So how often will that one thirty to three thirty be eaten up with other things that they need to do?
That would depend on the principal and how often he or she uh schedules faculty meetings or schedules PLCs. Um, I, I know myself as a principal, my practice was once a month for a faculty meeting. But given technology as it is today, it's entirely possible for the principal to push faculty meetings out. Uh, in a, an email format where they're just sharing information. Um, I would say that PLCs are essential because in PLCs, part of that process is planning. So a PLC is not really taking the place of their planning time. It's actually bringing them together with a curriculum coach or even someone from the district office, helping them with their planning. So I would not view that as supplanting any of their time.
Okay.
Okay, you just mentioned something and I, I want to make sure, um, at least you understand my expectation. If we're telling teachers that um to help them. Uh, deal with this situation, they're going to have two hours in the afternoon to help them, you know. Engage with the remote students, et cetera, et cetera. We can't have five principals. Doing something that is going to disadvantage those teachers in those five schools. There has to be a standard. So my, my, I think we've set the expectation that the teachers, the teachers through a combination at the middle school level and high school level. Of having reduced classroom sizes and the extra time, at least in the middle school. Of two hours at the end of the day, that the school system has done um a good job of helping provide them with the extra time necessary. To deal with the, with the extra workload, right? The unusual workload. And so I would say, please be um sensitive to communication coming in where teachers feel like they. That that's not being honored.
I hear you.
Because we can't have, but we can't tell them, hey, you've got this extra time and then they don't have it. You follow me?
I do.
And, and that will create a major problem, even if it's at one school. The principals need to understand and maybe they need to work together and you guys could talk about it. I'm not saying that the principals would, wouldn't do this. But I do know that when it comes to various topics, principals have a lot of flexibility. They run the school and and they can decide to do something. But if it is not consistent with what is being communicated in this board meeting and from the central office. They have to deal, they have to modify their program to deal with those expectations. That's what I think we would all agree we would expect.
So what I've already noticed in my short time here back in the district since mid-June. Is that our principals do have regular meetings with each other and they are very consciously aware. Of the need to be consistent across the board. I actually had a conversation earlier today with Emily Shaw, who is the principal at Albemarle High School. And she just called as the spokesperson or representative of high school principals to update me on their conversations. And the sole purpose of them getting together was to standardize the process across the high schools. So that there, that that wouldn't happen, that teachers or parents would say, well, Albemarle does this, South does this, West does this, North does this. They're being very intentional and deliberate. I've also seen the same process in place with the middle school principals as well.
Right, and I'm assuming that that would be the case. I would absolutely assume that would be the case. I'm just saying that if somebody makes a claim that that's not the case, A, I, I'm going to be skeptical at first. And then I would just, you know, I trust that you guys will, will, will check and make sure that that's not the case for us.
I will do that. Thank you, sir. And that is all that I have unless you have other questions for me regarding curriculum and instruction.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Gibson, just a moment, um, Mr. Magda.
Please, for those clackers.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Magda? I'm sorry, I didn't get the mic on the top.
Um, with the exploratory halls being utilized for fifth grade and our social, uh, have the classrooms down those halls been modified and outfitted? Uh, with active boards, anything that may need?
At some of our schools, the exploratory hallways are outfitted with um SMARTboard or Active Board technology. And some of them not. But I would stress that um we are a one to one district and so every student has a Chromebook. That has the capacity to do everything that an active board would do in terms of. Uh, bringing up information, utilizing uh Google Documents, Slides, Spreadsheets. Would have all of those applications and through Canvas, teachers can push out short video clips, links to outside websites. So they would have that ability to access anything digitally through their personal Chromebook device. Ms. Gibson?
There you go.
Yes, um, going along with what Mr. Graves has said. I'm, I'm just requesting that, that planning time. That teachers have. That it be held as sacred as possible. Um, even more so this year because I know it is just, you know, the circumstances, the way they are. So I am certainly requesting that and I'm, I'm having a feeling that, again, I'm going back to middle grades. Because I guess that's what, you know, I, I understand the most. But that it's going to be like, they have one week when they go back, they've got one week to get all this hybrid. Everything in place, correct? They've got one week.
It's one, it's one week to plan. Um, and so if they are, I'm, I'm putting on my middle school teacher hat and my middle school principal hat. In that week, as they're planning, if they go ahead and upload the document instead of the old way of making a copy of it. Or preparing something within the classroom in the four walls. If they just go ahead and get in that habit of creating the assignment, posting it in Canvas. Creating a document, posting it in Canvas. It, it will eventually become a very seamless process. It will become second nature to them. I know myself, first starting out using Canvas and using Google Docs, it seemed quite tedious. But now that I've done it, even, well, just a few months now, um, I can navigate through Canvas like a pro. Um, so it is very intuitive, um, it becomes very simplistic once you get into the role with it.
Okay, and I just want to make sure again that all the teachers get the support that they need as their.
they need as they're adventuring into, into this.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I've, I've made my note.
Okay. And then I have a question, I think probably more so for Mr. Plummer. Um, are we noticing that with our kindergarten enrollment, are we seeing that maybe some parents are opting not to send their kindergarteners this year? They're going to hold off and wait a year with things being as they are?
We have noticed overall that kindergarten numbers are lower or are low right now. We typically do see that coming into the school year and in that last little rush to get registered. We do see those numbers go up. Um, we don't know if that's really at this point why. We have not seen those, but in a lot of cases across the board, our kindergarten numbers are lower, um, than what they typically are at the end of the year. So, it's true. But we al, we always do start with lower kindergarten numbers. And then this last week, those registrations come in. I know Ms. Calvert, on the personnel side, has really tried to allot for those positions to be there should we see those students enroll and enter kindergarten between now and then.
Right. Well, I was just, um, inquisitive about it because I felt like I had read where even surrounding counties, others are seeing the same thing with their kindergarten enrollments.
Uh, Ms. Gibson, just for reference, we did have one hundred and twenty-two kindergarteners request full remote instruction.
Wow.
So, one hundred and twenty-two.
Wow. I have a quick question. Um, given the nature of having to learn a new, um, format like Canvas and all the planning that's going to take place, have we kept teachers pretty much teaching the same thing that they taught last year or have many moved around where they're learning new curriculum plus learning to upload it to Canvas? Or, I'm just curious.
Sure. Um, the schools that I worked with yesterday, middle school, I am not aware of anyone changing a grade level or changing a content, nor am I really aware of anything at the elementary level. Mr. Plummer, were there any, like, strange moves? No?
No.
No. We, we have been very conscious of that and have kept people where they have been, where their comfort is.
Okay.
And also for the elementary remote groups, the K-four, um, we tried to keep those groups by district. So, in other words, and, uh, we chose a, tried to choose a kindergarten teacher to teach in the Western End to teach the remote kindergarten students, especially for all of the districts.
Okay.
So, just, just so I understand, most of the teachers stayed at their school. They may have had to move classrooms, but they stayed at their school. Okay.
Yes.
Um, and because obviously I know, um, in speaking with teachers, uh, if they have to move a classroom, it's like moving an apartment.
Sometimes it is.
Right? Or, or a house in some cases.
Yes.
So, when they come back, I, it, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but a week is the normal time that they have to come in and do the planning. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
A lot of teachers will come in over the summer to come into their room and do some planning and do some decorating and moving around. That's not unusual.
Were there any restrictions this year that prevented teachers from coming in? And, well, okay, first of all, um, this county didn't know what the numbers were going to be until the thirty-first of July.
Yes.
So, teachers didn't know if they were going to move until this week. And hopefully everyone knows whether they were moving anyway. So, it's put them in a tough position because if they had wanted to start moving in July, they couldn't have because it was up in the air as to whether or not, what classroom they would be in, et cetera. So, that's the case. It's just, so there, it is challenging for them to have to move a classroom and, you know, get up to speed and do all that stuff. And you guys are aware of that.
So, the only ones that I'm really aware of is having to move a classroom would be those fifth grade teachers. I have not heard from any other principals about having to move teachers from their already assigned space. That, that is news to me. I have not had any word from principals to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
We've had a few that had to change the arrangement of classrooms within the school to accommodate the spacing of students. For instance, if you needed an extra kindergarten or first grade classroom, you had to move others down.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Gibson, go ahead.
I have to.
We're giving Ms. Pennington a good break.
First of all, I, I still don't feel that, um, Canvas is going to be as easy implementing, getting everything as, um, maybe what it might appear to be. Now, do we have IT and IT teacher during these five days, during these planning days now that teachers are going to have to get ready for this hybrid teaching? Is someone going to be there? I know you said curriculum coach. Do we have IT person that could be at every school and be working with these teachers that, um, may need that assistance to get up and going?
Media specialists are trained. And so, the media specialist will be on site during that prep week. The IT department has a limited number of staff, but they do rotate and float in and out.
Okay.
Um, so, so yes, there are people available. And curriculum coaches, there is one coach assigned at every elementary school, so they would be available to assist. At the middle and high school level, we have floating people there.
Okay. Well, I just would like to have that available as much as possible.
We purposely trained someone from every school to be a facilitator for that before we put out our training for teachers.
Okay.
For that reason. And we paid stipends for those folks to be, be trained.
Okay. And everyone knows that I'm the survey queen up here, but after, after a few days of school, is there any way possible that, um, a very simple anonymous, and I mean very, very simple anonymous, teachers don't have time to fill out long surveys. But could it be something as to, I, I want to know, I want to know their, their feelings on, on this hybrid, um, plan. Is it, is it working? Is it, is it not working? What, what's working and what's not working? What, how can we make it better and how can we assist our teachers in any way possible to make it better for them?
I really like that.
I am making a note.
I think that would be fantastic. And if we can constantly monitor and adjust with the Canvas and if, if the expectation is to have a one week of lessons in advance to do that and to work on that one week and then work on the next week, um, to, to do it in small increments. Cause I know this is probably very, very overwhelming.
I mean, my, um, my heart goes out to our teachers. I respect them dearly and I, I hold them high on a pedestal as they should be. Um, but as Ms. Crump said, if, if I were in the classroom now, I know that I would have to have an enormous amount of help from IT people and, you know, everyone. I just want them to know. And I feel like our teachers do know from tonight's discussion that there's not a single person on this board that is not behind them one hundred percent. Um, we're going to stand up for them. And again, I say, our parents and our children, they have got to assume responsibility to. This cannot just rest on the shoulders of our teachers. Thank you, Dr. Amy.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
It?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blake Lewis. Pennington, are you ready to resume?
Yes, sir. Take two. Thank you for your grace with that. Ms. Crump, your question was, how do we handle, um, a teacher who may, uh, test positive or, uh, have been exposed? And so, with those scenarios, we would follow the guidance where that, uh, individual would have to be quarantined for fourteen days. And of course, we would report that to the health department for any additional guidance.
And the people around that teacher, if the teacher were to get, were to be positive with COVID and they've been in a classroom with students, how do we proceed?
Right. Um, we would do our own contact tracing, uh, for lack of better words, um, who had been around that person, um, since either they, uh, tested or the symptoms began. And then the health department tells us to go back three days prior to that. And so, um, we would notify the individuals who would be impacted by that. And, um, they would have to, to quarantine as well if it was a situation where the, the, um, teacher was positive. If the, uh, teacher or the staff member had been exposed to a positive, then that's a different scenario.
Okay. So, I have one other question that, um, I know Ms. Calvert and I were talking about this on, in one of our conversations this week that I think would be a great opportunity to talk about publicly, um, the fourteen days that were granted for, for teachers to use for sick days, right? Okay. Would you please expand on that?
Yes. So, um, it, between March and, uh, Jul, uh, June fifteenth, the State Board of Education had offered state leave. And, um, that went away June fifteenth. But then we also have federal leave that is available to employees. And, um, so there's two types of federal leave. And one is COVID-related. If you're having symptoms, you've been diagnosed, you've been ordered to, um, to quarantine, um, employees are entitled to, um, two weeks, fourteen days, or you might call it eighty hours of paid leave, and they wouldn't have to use their personal leave balances. Um, there's also a leave for, um, parents with childcare issues due to COVID, like if their, um, daycare closed due to COVID reasons. Now, um, that is at a reduced rate of pay. Um, and we've created forms for those and give, sent those out, that out to our employees. And, uh, if they want to apply for that leave, they complete that form and we worry.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to Ms. Crump's question about quarantine requirements. So, again, it's, and this may not be accurate, but the information I have around daycare and childcare facilities is that if a, uh, a staff member, an adult tests positive, that there are no quarantine requirements for, um, any of the children that attend those daycare facilities, um, or even other staff members at those facilities. So, um, my question is if a teacher tests positive or, well, okay, let's just say, um, they test positive versus being exposed to somebody who is positive but have not tested positive. Are you saying that the students have to go and be quarantined for fourteen days?
The nurse, the nurse would work with that staff member to determine who they had been in close contact with. That definition of close contact is going to be important moving forward.
Yes, yes.
Um, that is within six feet for fifteen minutes or more cumulative. And that was something that we learned last week in the phone call was that it's, it's, it could be five minutes here, five minutes there. If we are practicing social distancing and wearing our mask, that's going to eliminate the number of people who may have to then be quarantined. So, we would work with that individual to identify who fits that definition.
So, can that, I don't know where that could be posted, but if that information could be posted somewhere, because one of the rumors floating around is that a teacher tests positive, or let's say any faculty member tests, well, a teacher, because they're in a classroom.
Right.
Then that whole classroom has to sit home for fourteen days. There are going to be mandatory remote learning for fourteen days. And technically, if you're going to say that, well, then the whole school needs to shut down because one person tests positive. But based on the guidelines, which obviously that would be impossible, um, and it would also be ridiculous, uh, to have that standard for the school system and a completely different and opposite standard for childcare facilities. So, um, there is, based on the, the guidelines for the school system, a set of criteria that includes such things as if a teacher, um, the only individuals that might be, um, required to quarantine at home would be individuals that came into close contact under the definition of the state. I'm not going to repeat it because I don't remember it. Um, and then they would have, but the other students would not have to. It's just the individuals that were, that were directly within close proximity of that individual based on the state law.
If they do not fit that definition of close contact, they do not have to quarantine.
Right. And, and a side note is that if the adult is always wearing their mask, unlike the children who are going to be given periodic breaks, um, then this should never be an issue because the issue with the face mask is not to prevent you from catching, it's to prevent you from transmitting it.
Right.
So, um, thus the social distancing, it makes sense. Um, one other question, I forgot about the face mask. You know how we have these barriers set up in, in the various, um, retail outlets and places like that?
Correct.
Is there a guideline for the school? Because one, um, business owner in West Stanley contacted me and said that they had been approached by other business owners to say, we will fabricate, uh, for the children around their desk, uh, barriers, Plexiglas barriers, at no charge to the school system. Um, if that meant that if they're within that barrier, they would not have to wear their mask. Uh, but if they got outside of that barrier, has there been any discussion about that, um, at the state level or anything?
I'm going to defer to that, um, to Mr. Bowers and Ms. Calvert. Um, my understanding is it would not negate the need for a face covering.
Okay. All right.
That is my understanding as well. However, we have ordered some, uh, barriers that put on like the kidney-shaped tables for the lower grades so they could work in groups. And, um, and we're going to test that out and see how that works for them.
Thanks.
I have a couple more questions.
Okay.
Um, I, I have some people that have asked if EC self-contained students will be required to wear a mask. I feel like the answer is yes.
Those that can will.
Okay.
If there are reasons, whether it be medical, um, sensory, auditory,
Mm-hmm.
Then we have options. We would suggest, uh, either the face shield. We also have a small supply of, uh, the face coverings, the masks that have the, the clear, um, area around the mouth, uh, if that would help.
Okay. And is that usually, um, handled by a doctor's note?
Through the nurse.
Through the nurse.
The nurse would work with that family to determine what direction that needs to go. But we would be looking for the documentation. And in the case of a self-contained student, that IAP would be looked at and reviewed as well.
Okay. And my next question may be more for Ms. Calvert. Um, do we have the, a number of subs in place assigned to each school? Could you talk about subs that in the case that we have some quarantining?
Absolutely. So, um, we have asked ESS, our sub management company, to assign groups of subs to a school so that we wouldn't want a sub, subbing at school A and then the next day going to school B and try to prevent some of that cross-contamination. Also, um, we have asked to have a designated full-time sub at all of our elementary and middle schools for the first two weeks. We know with all the new procedures, check-in procedures, we're going to need extra hands on deck. So, they can be used for that. And then if someone is out and they need to sub, they can sub for the day. Um, I've asked ESS to track that, how often we use them. Um, if it were my guess, I would imagine we're going to use a sub every day at every school in some capacity. And if that is the case, we would look to just designate full-time subs at, at the school if needed.
Just a couple of follow-up questions, uh, from me. First of all, do we have the sufficient DPE that we need available?
Yes.
I know that is a loaded question.
If, uh, yes, I have great confidence that, um, with what the state shipped out for the nurses, for those that are going to be those frontline, that person who is going to be monitoring that waiting area, um, with symptomatic students. Um, and Mr. Bowers may want to comment on this, but we, um, have yet to receive the state's supply of- of masks.
That was my next question.
And.
Have we gotten it, and do we know if they're going to be sufficiently sized?
The research behind the mask states that it is one size fits all, but it can be adjusted to fit the smaller face simply by, you know, double tying the earpiece. But they did mention a Harvard research study that it was applicable and provided coverage for any size face. The masks are in transit. They were due to be received the 30th last week. We are hoping that they are making their way here from Illinois at this time.
And I assume training has been provided to the frontline folks, obviously, and proper use of that PPE.
That will occur next week when the nurses return, yes.
Question on the PPE. Can students wear their own masks?
Certainly.
They can, so they can bring one in from that?
Certainly. We do encourage that, you know, it is a chance to express themselves, and they can have fun with it. And if it's something that they've helped pick out, then maybe they'll be more prone to wear it. But we do remind families that we will follow our code of conduct, you know, that we're not going to wear anything that's offensive.
This may be more for Mr. Bowers. So are our schools sanitized and ready, the classrooms, for our teachers to be coming back to work this Friday?
Yes.
And do those teachers have, each have in their classrooms some type of solution, whatever it is that they may need at some point in time?
We're in the process of getting that out. We have the supplies. When, you know, construction begins, they don't have the proper cleaning supplies. We have everything on site.
Right, okay. So they shouldn't be having to go buy anything out of their own pockets?
No, they should not. I know there's been some, I've heard, you know, through the grapevine somewhat, that, you know, parents, teachers, but they should not. We will be providing everything.
Right, right, okay.
This Gibson, would you mind repeating what he just said, just for the benefit of the people that are maybe listening from home? So, because they couldn't hear his response.
Well, that.
If you remember it.
Yes, that the schoolrooms, first of all, when the teachers do return to work Friday, everything is going to be sanitized. It is ready for our teachers. And then there are going to be the solutions, the cleaning supplies available to each teacher, where each teacher should not have to go out and spend any money out of their own pocket in buying cleaning supplies. That should be provided. And I think I remember where Mr. Bowers said that he really wants us to use our cleaning supplies too, not just something even like Clorox wipes, because they may not be as effective with the chemical base in them.
Yeah, just to, and I guess we'll channel him. So when we had our special call meeting, people could go back and refer to Facebook Live, where Mr. Bowers did present to us. And the issue that Ms. Gibson was just talking about is that various chemicals have different application procedures and effectiveness depending upon the amount of time they set. So the chemicals that Mr. Bowers chose were the most effective, the fastest. So it would give us an increased probability that we're disinfecting properly for the students. So just wanted to mention that.
I want to add one thing to piggyback on Ms. Gibson's questions and comments, is we are moving to Safe Schools videos this year. We've used the videos for training in the past, and then we went away from, we're moving back to it this year. And one video that every employee will have to watch, it's going to be Assigned Effective Friday, is cleaning your workspace area and understanding the difference between cleaning and disinfecting. Short, little, like eight-minute video, but it's very helpful.
And they should get one unit of credit for that?
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Gibson? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much to you and Dr. Blake Lewis for your information tonight. It's been very informative, and I hope has answered a number of questions and concerns that we, as board members, have been inundated with over the last several days. And our goal certainly is to make sure that we answer as many questions as possible for parents and teachers and everyone else in the need to know. Mr. Dudley, you're up.
I'm sorry, do not. Ms. Calvert, sure up. Administrative Personnel and Student Services. You're doing double duty.
So an updated copy of the personnel agenda was at your place this evening. Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
Do I have a motion in Section 2, the personnel agenda as presented, be approved?
I move to approve it.
Motion by Ms. Gibson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, even discussion. Do you know, and all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Say again?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Personnel agenda is approved. All right, now, Mr. Dudley, you're up.
I'm present. I don't have anything to present tonight, but I do want to bring it to your attention that it was, I did mention that we need to.
For the sake of the public.
Okay. I did mention back in our July 1st meeting that we need to, that I asked that we go ahead and present, that I would establish a budget for local and capital outlay and present it to you for your approval before we finalize our federal and state budgets. What I ask tonight is that maybe by, before the next board meeting, that we have a finance committee meeting. And I will get with hope on that when I have the budget created, so we can go over it as a finance committee and then present it to the full board at the next board meeting for your approval for capital outlay and local. We have had a lot of budget revisions done from the state level since July 1st. Presently, as of yesterday, we've already got seven that has been revised since the initial allotment. So that, right now, seems to be a moving target. As of the seventh revision, they're already taking money back from us, from low wealth, to correlate for the COVID relief that they are reallocating through COVID relief funds of low-wealth counties. So I will actually address that further with y'all in the presentation to the finance committee, because I want some, I need some questions answered on that. Because that was not my thoughts when that was discussed, how the low coronavirus relief fund through low-wealth counties were going to be implemented. So I do want some clarification from the state level on that before I elaborate on that, if that's so. But we, as I said, we already have seven revisions to the state. Several of those are, probably about three of them are COVID relief fund funds that have been allocated to Stanley County for different approaches, whether it be for personnel, IT equipment, to student IT equipment, to child nutrition fund sources, as well as for classroom initiatives. So we will, I will, I bring that to your attention as well, how much funds that is going to be. One that is very questionable to my, just for tonight, is actually the child nutrition funds that's been, that's been allocated for COVID relief. We have got an amount of roughly about $85,000 that is a very small amount for what they're wanting us to do with. So that's going to be some ideas of what, how we're going to be able to spend that is what myself and Ms. Calvert and Ms. Melton will have to actually address on what's our approaches on that. And that will be funds that would actually be utilized, we could utilize after the August threshold of beginning school.
What I'm gathering you're saying in a nutshell is that the state has given money, is now retaking money and allocating, or determining in the allocation process what you can do with it.
That, that is what I'm taking from the low-wealth allocation. So, but like I said, I don't want to speak more than that at this point until I get a further expectations of what that was actually supposed to be for. Because I was anticipating when they were talking about funding for COVID relief, they were talking about low-wealth counties receiving more additional funding for COVID relief, because, you know, we're very strapped to what we can get from counties when you fall as a low-wealth county. So my intentions was that was going to be a separate pot of money that we were going to get in addition to low wealth. So when I saw the revision Thursday, and the funds were taken from our low-wealth appropriation, it just floored me sort of, to an extent. I was unable to attend the webinar we had this morning due to the hurricane back-at-home situation that I had yesterday evening. But not one thing was addressed in elaboration with the DPI about the low-wealth reversion and what it was to be utilized for, for COVID relief. So I do have an email to DPI to explain to me why there was a revision to low wealth of the amount that we received that was taken from Stanley County, and what is that going to do for COVID relief. That was not my interpretation. So I haven't heard anything at this point.
Are you saying the money was withheld or withdrawn?
It was withdrawn.
From, yeah, okay.
From our low wealth.
And how much was it?
It's about $207,000. So I think it's $268 or $288. I can't read right off. I think it was $288.
Did we factor that low-wealth fund in at all during our budget process this spring? Or is that something that is earmarked specifically for things, so we don't, we don't budget it?
That was, I don't want to say that it was, because I'm not for sure what exact amount was used when the allocation for low wealth back in, prior to me, was used. If, if the allocation that was, or the planning document for low wealth was sent to us at the amount that we received in our, in our initial allotment, back when any planning was done back in the spring or prior to myself coming to Stanley County, then yes, that would be difficult.
The reason I'm asking this question, and I know you're going to follow up on this, I'm sure, is that if we had those low-wealth funds designated, whether they were earmarked or regardless, they were designated for certain things. Like, let's just say they were designated for paint, okay? And they withdraw that money, and they give us money, and there are stipulations, and we can't use it for paint, that's going to be a problem.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, it'll be, we'll have to track that down.
And I will bring that back to y'all when I get further knowledge of what the whole intentions of that was.
Once you get your clarification.
Yes, sir.
Get up with hope. After, let me know.
Okay, I sure will.
And we'll schedule time for the finance committee meeting.
Thanks.
Work this out, or get an explanation somewhere.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments? We have no public comments. All right, superintendent's comments, Ms. Calvert?
So I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on life since March 16th. And, you know, my heart is just filled with gratitude and admiration for so many people in this room, in our central office, our administrators, our staff, our students, our parents, and the community. It has been amazing to me that we had to pivot in a weekend from full, students went home on a Friday thinking we'd see them again on Monday. And then our life changed on that Saturday when the governor made his announcement. And all those folks I just mentioned to you all came together, worked together, and we made it work. And, I mean, I think it's phenomenal, and I've said this before, on that Monday, we were one of the few districts in the state that still provided meals to our, the students in Stanley County. And that's because of those, our folks in child nutrition and transportation. And I don't want to start naming certain departments, because that's the beauty of this, is everyone has come together and worked together. And this, you know, this is something that can only be done with everyone working as a cohesive unit. And so now we're focusing our attention on starting school. And this is something we've never done before. So this process is brand-new to us. And there will be kinks, and we will, as hard, as hard as we try, there's going to be things that come up that we thought, well, we haven't thought this went through. We're trying to think of every avenue in our planning. And so, you know, I just want to thank all those folks, again, that are coming together with planning. You know, our administrators have been working night and day, round the clock. You know, our teachers were taught, that's going to be, it's going to be different for them, and it's going to be a challenge. It's something new. And I'm just going to, and, you know, we've had questions from parents and community members, and I appreciate those questions because that helps us in our planning. So I'm just asking for everyone's patience as we work through this, and just encourage everyone to continue working together, because we're all here for the students in Stanley County. And we can only do that if we work together as a united force. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. I'm going to start with Ms. Gibson. Board member comments?
Well, thank you, Ms. Calvert, and everyone here, Dr. Amy, Louis Blake, everyone. I look out here and see your faces, and I know that it's been a uniformed effort to get everything in place. And I do appreciate it. I know how hard that you have worked. And I see some of our principals and some teachers. I know how hard you're working, and some who are going to be at different schools, leading. And I wish you, wish you all the best, because you are those great leaders. I feel the anxiety that our teachers feel. I really do. And if there's anything that you feel like you need or whatever, please, please reach out. There's been many teachers that I think have contacted several of us on the board. And I always, I always value what you have to say, and I value your input. And I know that we have the best teachers, and I'm hoping things will go smoothly. We just have never been in this situation before. So we're, I'm praying that everything will work out and that everyone will be safe and healthy, and that we will get through this. Again, thank you, Ms. Calvert, for your leadership. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Well, I would like to say the same thing that they're saying. Our staff here has worked really, really hard. I've been here, I've seen it. You spend time here that you could be at home doing something else, and I do appreciate that. And as far as our students coming back, our remote ones, I want them to have happy, happy days. Thank you.
Mr. Poole?
Hello?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out how to work this phone. I think I muted myself. I just want to extend my thanks to everyone in the system for the hard work they've been putting in. And I haven't seen anything but a can-do attitude out of the central office, and I appreciate it very deeply. I appreciate also you stepping in at the last second under the gun tonight to chair the meeting. I think you've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
And also, I didn't know that the board I had been chairing liked to talk so much until I had to sit and listen to them on the phone. But anyway. I think you've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
And also I didn't know that the board I had been chairing liked to talk so much until I had to sit and listen to them on the phone. They, they were thoughtful questions and I appreciate them asking them. And I just want to say something in defense of the board because they've been some harsh comments made on social media about the board not knowing what it was doing. And I think it comes from lack, lack of understanding of what the board and the staff's role is. The, the, the board's role is to set a target or an objective and then the staff develops the plan. And that's what's been going on. We said we wanted to go with this option and the staff has been developing that plan. So when we've had meetings and been asking questions, we're just merely trying to flesh out points that are of concern to us. And it's not that we don't know what's going on. We just want to make sure we got all the bases covered. But, uh, thank everyone for their, for work and, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, I just want to echo what's already been said. I appreciate all the hard work of everyone in the central office, our principals. And, uh, just in advance, thank you to all of our teachers, janitorial staff, bus drivers, folks in the cafeteria. I, I know they don't hear it enough, but you know, they mean the world to us and we're very grateful for each and every one of our employees. And just to kind of jump on to what Melvin had just reflected to. You know, I will say, I, I think as a board, we have thought long and hard about what was going to happen tonight, which direction we were going to go. And, you know, I think even at seven o'clock, uh, some of us still didn't have our minds made up 100%. 100% still may be, uh, you know, not fair for each and every one of us. I mean, cause you always second guess yourself, but I will say that, uh, hearing from Ms. Blake Lewis and Ms. Calvert, everybody that spoke tonight and Ms. Pennington, uh, you know, we're confident in all the hard work that's been put into our central office to get Stanley County schools ready to go for August 17th. And, you know, at the end of the day, uh, the biggest number to me was that 72% of our respondents that said they wanted face-to-face instruction of some sort. And at the end of the day, we work for the people. We don't make decisions for them. We, uh, listen to them and speak up on their behalf. And at the end of the day, by going the route we have, we are ultimately giving them the ultimate say in their child education. So I'm glad that our board has decided to go in this direction. And again, I just appreciate everyone's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Graham.
I'm just going to tag on what Ryan just talked about, about the 72% of our parents and what they have asked for, what they want. The fact that we got 93% participation in this survey is astounding to me. I'm very, very pleased with that and excited to know that 93% of our parents have weighed in on what they want moving forward for their, for their children. It tells you, because how many times do you put a survey out there and you know, you just, you might get a rough sample. But we have 93% of the parents of our roughly 8,000 students who have replied to this. And 72% of our parents want their kids having some sort of face-to-face education. And so I do want to say something. I wrote a couple of notes down on my way here today. For the teachers out there who are asking us to abandon our Plan B model and to go full remote. And I know you're out there. I hear you. I've gotten your messages. We've gotten emails. You, you have valid concerns. We do care about your health. I also want to remind you that you're essential workers. There are a lot of essential workers out there. We have grocers. We have cashiers. We have healthcare workers. We have journalists. We have many people out there who are very essential right now and our teachers and our staff are very, very essential. And I want to remind you of how essential you are. I want you to think not only about those students that are enjoying coming to school and that do their work and that come in with a bath every day and a full belly. But I want you to also think about the kids that are coming in who have families who are very sadly disengaged. And I want you to think about the parents who have multiple jobs and they're rarely home. And I want you to think about the single parent who's doing her best to make ends meet and barely having enough time to get home, kick her shoes off, make a meal, spend a little quality time with her student, with her children and try to dig into common core math because she wasn't taught that way. And then we have some kids who don't know what a wholesome, safe environment looks like unless they are at the school building. And these kids are hoping beyond all hope, these kids, I know, I can assure you, I taught them many of them. They're hoping beyond all hope that those doors are going to open on August the 17th because they've been at home since March and home is not a good place for them. They need to come and they need to see smiling faces. They need two meals a day. They need somebody to teach them so they can get educated and get out of the cycle in which they're living. I care about you teachers. I care about your health. We've gotten a lot of veiled threats over the last few weeks of what kind of people must we be that we would put our teachers and our staff in harm's way? And I hope that you'll shift your thinking and that you'll think about the students who are in harm's way right now and who need you and who need us all. I'm going to end with reading something because I think it's important. We've heard a lot from angry voices and I think that anger is justified. I think it's, um, it's more anxiety and fear talking and I, and I get it because you needed answers. You need answers. You want to know what to expect moving forward because you're the chief of that classroom and you need to know what you're doing. So I get it. But I do want to applaud the people that have been working so hard behind the scenes and this is for you. This was something that was sent to me by another teacher and parent. It says, "I meant to send you a message a while back, like as soon as our school system announced their plan." "I wanted to send you a message and say how happy and impressed I was with Stanley County School's decision to go back to school, while also giving folks the option to have remote learning. I was impressed with the innovative idea of moving fifth to the middle school so that there would be room for K through four students to be in a building with face-to-face learning every day. These babies have to be with a teacher to really learn what they need to learn. Thank you, thank you and thank you. I am worried sick for some of our students who have no support from home and are sitting in terrible situations all day long. I can't even imagine what some of these children are going through. I really worry about our children's well-being and their lack of education. If we don't get back to school and educate these children, our future is in trouble. It made sense to get the K through four in a building with teachers all day, every day. I feel that five through eight are capable of remote learning and thank God it's not every day because they need the face-to-face with a teacher as well. As a parent of two middle schoolers, I was so happy they would not have remote learning every single day. I'm praying that they will be able to go every day by second semester. As a parent and a teacher, I was thankful for our district's plan. I pray with all my heart that we continue with our district's plan and that things will work out just fine. Praying for you. I know it can't be easy with all the emotions and strong opinions." Thank you, friend. You know who you are. And it's not easy, but it's necessary. And as, um, as uncomfortable as I am and as it might be on the receiving end of some of the insults, I am going to stand firm with our 72%.
Grace.
Thank you. You said that much nicer than I could have or would have, um, or was prepared to. So, uh, that's good. You were probably used by the Lord tonight. And my wife probably thanks you too. She was probably worried what I was going to say. I was, um, I was incredibly, um, I was incredibly not shocked by a few of the, the comments that were being spread around social media. The selfishness behind them because of all the points that you mentioned and as well as the individual that communicated with you. There are children who are in serious distress. And not only that, one of the things that the school board did when we had, uh, when we, when we did this shift over a weekend, like Ms. Calvert said, it was miraculous. One of the biggest concerns, the first concern that Dr. James and all of his staff in the central office had was how are we going to feed these kids? And that went off without a hitch. It was amazing. Everyone mobilized. And not only people inside of the school, but volunteers from around the community and business owners. I mean, it was just amazing. But then a couple of weeks later, we had the Department of Health and Human Services throw a, a big wrench in the works. And that was when they limited the number of people that could be inside of a facility or a room at the same time, which is going to significantly restrict the number of people working in the cafeteria facilities, making it very difficult to, um, produce the number of meals that were going to be necessary to keep feeding the same number of students. And I remember, I mean, within five minutes of me finding out about it and blowing my stack at the, at the, at the, at the thoughtlessness of that decision. I immediately started getting calls from people in the community and, and one of the, one of the calls I got was from the Sasser family who obviously very engaged, they have been engaged, so I'm, I'm happy to share their name. And, um, a, a member of the family called and said, "Hey, what is going on here? Is this true?" And I know they mobilized to start making calls to the state. Because the exact same thing that jumped into my mind as soon as I heard that was the same thing that jumped into their minds and probably the minds of everybody on the board and all the faculty and staff of Stanley County. That was, what's going to happen to these kids? They were having meals delivered on these buses and now they're not going to get those meals. And for a lot of students, it's nothing, you know, they, it's, they get the meal, they bring it in, maybe they eat it, maybe they don't. But for a lot of students, that's their only meal. And for people to take that for granted, all I can say is that you should feel very blessed that you've never had to live in that environment. Now, um, I'm going to shift gears a little bit here before I get too irritated. There's a lot of good news. We have been interviewing, uh, superintendents for, for the vacancy. Not that we don't love Vicky, but, um, I think she still is going to live outside the county, so. But it's interesting because you get to hear the perspective of outsiders that are professionals about Stanley County. Not a few people online who have questionable opinions based on a lack of knowledge. And so throughout that process, one of the things that we learned, particularly from people inside of the state of North Carolina, is that one of the things that you hear is, well, this county is going remote and this county is going remote and this county is going remote. What people don't understand is most counties in the state of North Carolina don't have the luxury to offer a Plan B, to offer hybrid because they don't have the capacity. And we heard numerous times that there were counties that were jealous or envious of Stanley County because we could offer full-time, um, face-to-face for K-4. And, and these were people that, that didn't have to say that. We didn't ask them that. They volunteered it. And that the plan that we had put in place, they thought was very thoughtful. And that was a, a comment I heard several times. And one of the things that every time I think about Plan B and Plan B and I think about all the, the good that it does and I think about the fact that we have 93% of the folks in our county completed the survey. With 72% saying that they preferred face-to-face. One thing that always gets lost and it, it just, I don't understand why. Every single family in Stanley County can opt for Plan C. They do not have to send their kids. They can do full remote learning, full-time remote learning. They don't have to send their kids if they're not comfortable. If in any way, shape or form, they feel that their child maybe is at risk. Maybe the child is perfectly healthy, but maybe they have, uh, older family members that live in the house and they don't want to take the chance that the child who's perfectly healthy comes home and brings something with them. Everybody understands that. That's why there was absolutely no discussion that, that we would offer, uh, remote learning. That was never even a question. The question was, do we provide face-to-face? Well, parents have the option. So I, I really, when I hear parents complaining about it, I'm really shocked because you have the option. And most of those parents, you know, probably have elected to go for remote. But the other thing, like children having food on the table. And, um, I don't know about other board members, but I got calls from individuals who said that if we did not do face-to-face, they thanked us for offering this. And this is after the decision had already been made. But they were concerned because there was talk from the very vocal few online that I can only claim are either A, incredibly selfish, or B, um, uh, concerned that they just don't know how to show it. There are literally family members where if they have to pull one family member home that are fortunate enough to be able to do that, they're going to lose their house. I mean, that, how people cannot think about that. This is a huge issue. I talked to a business owner on my way in tonight. And her own employees, if she had not gotten the, the Paytech Protection Act, employees would have lost their houses. And that means sometimes people have to go to work. They can't afford childcare. And if they can afford childcare, there's a waiting list in many places to get childcare. And that means that you also have to consider the schedule of getting the children to childcare. So all I can say is that I'm incredibly proud that the school system has made every effort to put together a very thoughtful plan. The people in the central office, the faculty and staff, um, everyone has worked incredibly hard. I have never seen in my entire professional career, a group of people more dedicated and more competent and putting together a, 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 a better plan than the central office of Stanley County Schools. I mean, it is absolutely, um, fantastic. And I am a critical person and I don't, I don't, I don't say things like that unless I really mean it. And they have done an absolutely amazing job. What happens if things get bad in three weeks or four weeks, once we start school and we have to go for remote? Well, then we go for remote. We have the option to do that. But I'm glad at least we're going to start off trying to make face-to-face available in the safest way possible with all the safeguards in place, um, taking every precaution. And I know that other counties wish they were in the place that we could do it. And they wish they had the staff that we have to make it possible. So I just want to thank you guys very, very, very much. Um, and I want to end on saying this. Communication is critical. We have learned, um, we have heard the comments from teachers and staff that have felt like communication needed to be a little bit better. And, um, and it's, they're unusual times. The board is definitely going to keep track of this. Glenn, Ms. Gibson had an awesome suggestion of doing a survey. And she does love surveys, but it's great. It's great. Everybody agrees. That's a great idea so that we can keep track. You can't manage what you can't monitor and you can't monitor if you're not asking people's opinions and soliciting their feedback. So once again, I think it's another example of how Stanley County Schools and the school board are working together in the best interest of the students and the parents and the families. So, um, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for giving me the time to say what I said.
Typically the board chair does not participate in, in board member comments, but I'm going to take a little liberty of the position tonight and make a few. First of all, as all the board members have said this evening, we do hear what is being said in the community. We do hear very clearly the concern that is out there from parents, from staff, from teachers. And we take it all very seriously. We have to. We have a moral responsibility to do so as elected officials. I keep very close contact with colleagues in the community as well as throughout, uh, the healthcare system and in, in other areas of the state as well. I get daily briefings from the Department of Health and Human Services and CDC and all the other websites that can give you a multitude of information, much more than you could ever process. But there are several things that I've been looking at recently. And particularly I'm looking at where we as Stanley County- And particularly, I'm looking at where we as Stanley County fall in the big scheme of things in comparison to the state as a whole and also in comparison to surrounding counties. And we understand that this plan is not perfect. I don't know that any plan we could ever come up with, including all remote learning, would be perfect. We understand that we're going to have to make changes on the fly and that includes from day one. There will be things we'll need to do to reinvent the wheel in some cases or to take a different route. We understand that. But please understand that we are very much concerned for our, our children and our students. And as has been said by other members tonight, I'm concerned about them from the standpoint of their need for socialization, from the standpoint of their need for camaraderie, from the standpoint of their mental health even. So please understand that the inevitable will happen. There will be at some point in time, someone in Stanley County schools who will test positive. We will follow our protocol. We will seek additional guidance if we need it and we will act accordingly based on that guidance that's given to the best of our ability. And as Mr. Graves has said, if that means we initially start out doing great and three weeks in, we have an issue and have to go to all remote learning, well, we're already set up to do that. It'll be a relatively, I'm going to say, simple process, but a much less difficult process than it might have been otherwise. So please bear with us, please be patient. Give us an opportunity to get things right and to adjust as we go with the understanding that again, we're not perfect people. We've made a decision based on the best information that we have available at the time. But please understand too, that information sometimes changes hourly, much less daily. And I have made a commitment to Ms. Calvert and the central office staff that I will keep them abreast of any changes that I see that have occurred that are of concern. And we'll continue to discuss those concerns with, with my colleagues in the community and, and again, in other areas of the state. Had a long conversation today with our health department director and his staff and they made me aware of the current numbers and the predictions for the fall and such. And continue, will, will continue to keep in close contact with them and follow their guidelines and their recommendations as well. So thank you all for being patient. Again, please bear with us and if you're going to throw darts, well, that's what we signed up for. And the money that we get every month for it, I assure you, probably doesn't cover the darts that are being thrown, but that's okay. Keep throwing them because that is your right to do so. I will entertain a motion that the board go into closed session on the appropriate general statutes for personnel matters, student matters, and attorney-client matters. Motion by Ms. Gibson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntyre. Any discussion? Any on all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.